Hello, all right. Good morning. This is City Council Work Session for Monday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. It is ten a.m. And the first item we have this morning is municipal court annual report.
Good morning. Um, I believe you've all received the report. So let me just go over some of the highlights. As you know, most of the cases in municipal court are prosecuted. Some, the city attorney can actually file charges, but most of them are filed by the Montrose Police Department, the animal control officer or the code enforcement officer. And they're filed on a standard summons and complaint form, uh, which is somewhat informal, I would say, compared to formal district court filings, for example. But that, uh, form has the charge on it as well as the appearance date. Now, there's a certain class of cases for which we have a fine fee schedule and the officer can write on the summons, the fine for that particular offense. And if that's the case, then that person has two options. One is to pay the summons, pay the fine over what's called site pay USA. Uh, site pay USA is an adjunct of the full court system. So they put the data in, they pull up their case and they can make a credit card payment over site pay. That comes back to us so we know the payment's been made and we can update our records, um, and close the case out. The other option that they have is to come to the court window and pay the fine. And, uh, once again, we take the money in and we close the case out without any court appearance. And that is an extremely helpful, uh, function for us because it reduces the time we have to spend on Thursdays with a full docket. And it's also, it reduces costs because we don't have to deal with that case. It's actually a fairly simple process. Um, and we do handle a number of cases like that, especially traffic cases, because most traffic cases come with a penalty assessment. And those fines and fees are established by administrative order. Uh, and this is going to be posting all of our administrative orders online so that you can look at those and see how we function in great detail. Um, you know, the Municipal Judges Association refers to municipal courts as quality of life courts because the majority of the cases we deal with, uh, you know, some are standard criminal cases, some are standard traffic cases, but many of them are code violations, animal control violations and such that you could not prosecute or, uh, deal with in any other circumstances. So we run into a lot of cases where, um, somebody has issues with their animals or somebody's disconnecting the sewer improperly or some such thing. Those are the types of cases that we can deal with and that you can deal with at municipal court level, that you can't deal with in the state court because you can't prosecute municipal warrants violations in the state court. Um, if however, uh, and the other benefit, by the way, especially in traffic cases, if a person enters a guilty plea and pays their fine promptly, and we stamp this on the records we sent to the Department of Revenue, then they get their points reduced by that. So there's an incentive for people to take advantage of this process. Now, um, of course, we, uh, do have a Thursday docket session and we do take pleas there and sentence people there. We also schedule other hearings such as trials and, and so forth. Um, and that's done on our Thursday session, which is a regular docket session. And now I wanted to go over some of the, uh, highlights. This has been a roller coaster year. Um, Judge Brown retired, um, after nineteen years of service. And, uh, Emily Boyko left in October fourth and followed by Jody Stewart, October twenty-fifth. Each of them had six years of service. So we've gone from thirty-one years of experience in the court to less than two. And that's quite a bit of knowledge to lose very quickly and time to make up. By the way, I should have introduced Karina, who knows that she's here today with me. Um, she's the expert on the financial data and the statistical data in the back of the report. Karina's, and now we created a new, uh, position essentially, a court administrator, which has some higher qualifications. And Karina's been filling that role since the first part of November. And then Donna, um, Hawken came on in the latter part of November. So we're, uh, nothing's starting over, uh, as it were, but I'm going to say they are doing an excellent job. Uh, they're much more, uh, knowledgeable about the computer systems than I am. I guess when you're an old person and weren't brought up with this stuff, you just don't know it as well, but they're, they're really tops in their respect. I think that I can tell you that we have mastered the day-to-day operations in the court. Uh, so everything seems to be moving smoothly. Uh, we are making some changes as time goes by, but, uh, I can say once again that the court is operating well. Now, um, let me go over some of the, uh, things on page three. Because of COVID, we did not do team court in the last, uh, year, school year. We started that up this year, uh, again, and Dan Hotsen Pillar took on the position of, uh, team court coordinator. We've had two team court sessions so far, one last fall, one this past week. We have one scheduled for, uh, a week after, next week, actually, and then another one on April twentieth. And we're doing something a little different. We're going to actually have two defendants in one team court session. So, um, uh, that, that's going to be right of wrong. And, uh, I think we've learned a lot. You know, when you have a year hiatus, sometimes you've got to relearn the things that you've forgotten during that year. So I think we've, uh, have a basis now for moving on into the next year with a little more background. When I spoke to you last, I indicated we want to go to video conferencing with the jail and we have accomplished that, uh, in conjunction with the city attorney's office, the Montrose County Sheriff and the IT department. Uh, we've been doing video conferences now since last fall. And the advantage of that is that we get lots of people in the Montrose County jail, they aren't there because of their municipal court case, because very few people with municipal charges are being arrested at this point in time. But they are usually are there with some other case related to the state court system. Um, and that creates a real problem for us because it seems like what happens is they get into the state system and we lose track of them. They get out, maybe past their court date and they haven't come to court. So we've kind of, uh, have some difficulty catching up with them, if you will. But by being able to do the video conferencing, if we have somebody in municipal court with municipal case in the county jail, we can put them on the conference, uh, video conference and take care of their case and resolve. And we have been doing that now for about, oh, six months or so. And I will point out that in conjunction with the IT department, we've now been able to project those on the screen so that we have, uh, a fully public courtroom. Uh, you know, the public's entitled to come to court and we're obligated to make it a public proceeding. We post these dockets online so people know about that and we can project it onto the screen and they can see on the screen the person at the jail. So, uh, it's, it's a fully public process. And I think that's helped us catch some cases that otherwise fall through the cracks. Um, as you know, uh, legislature passed House Bill twenty-one thirteen fourteen last year and that, uh, did away with the ability of the Department of Revenue to take action against a driver's privilege for either paying, failing to pay fines or, uh, having an outstanding warrant. So there was a fee connected with that, a thirty dollar fee, uh, which is split with the local jurisdiction and the Department of Revenue and we can no longer charge that. So what we're doing is, and I discuss it a little bit later, we're referring all those cases out to collections, uh, so that we can at least try to collect the amount that's due. Uh, and on the next page, I give you some data on, uh, the, uh, referrals we make to Bushwood Capital Group. Bushwood Capital Group is actually the third collection agency that the court's used over the last several years. And, uh, as far as I can tell, they're doing an excellent job for us. Uh, we refer the case to Bushwood Capital and they, uh, commence collection activity. Now, there is a fee, a statutory fee that they can charge and, uh, the numbers I've given you here are net of that fee. So they're collecting their fee, taking that off the top and remitting the rest to us. And then we note that in the case, uh, and give the person credit for the amount that's paid. Um, we, and in twenty twenty, you can see the numbers are rather low, thirty thousand seven hundred two dollars and forty-seven cents. I think that's because there was a transition to the collection agency. Uh, and we have made a big effort here in twenty twenty-one to get those cases referred to collections and you can see the amount outstanding. My, my understanding of talking with them is doesn't reflect that in these numbers because there is some delay, is that the collection rate's about twenty percent. That's what we expect to collect. Okay, our goals, what we hope to accomplish, uh, in twenty twenty-two. Continued training office staff, including taking advantage of training programs offered by the Colorado Municipal Judges Association and Colorado Association for Municipal Court, Municipal Court Administration. Um, the, the staff is, is excellent on the computer data, but we're working on training them on the legal, uh, aspects. And, uh, we have a process set out to do that. The Municipal Judges Association has twice annual trainings and I'll be going to those. And the Colorado Association for Municipal Court Administrators, which deals specifically with court clerks, has trainings and we're going to have, uh, our staff attend those. I think the first ones in the fall, right?
I think the first ones actually in the summer.
Okay. Okay. And then there's one in the fall.
Yes.
Right, okay. They know more about that. Secondly, we're reviewing all court forums, office procedures, administrative orders to ensure compliance with statutes, rules of procedure and ordinances and maximum accuracy and efficiency. Um, I, it seems to me, we use the full court system issue, no? And we're not, it's not clear to us that we're getting the full benefit of the full court system. It's kind of like my golf clubs, they're better than I am. And, uh, so we're going to be reviewing, uh, the, the full court system to see if we can use it more efficiently. And specifically if we can start doing stuff digitally in the courtroom instead of passing these papers back and forth, uh, which I think we all agree are not very well done. Um, now the next step, and I think we're all in agreement that we don't want to move too quickly. We want to go slowly and carefully and deliberately, but once we get to the point where we feel we're utilizing full court, then we want to download the documents using the, there's a module, they have an imaging module that allows you to download the documents. And whereas we're now a paper-based, um, system, we actually had six separate filing cabinets for six separate cases. And sometimes we run around like three blind mice trying to find a case file. So I think it'd be a great advantage to be able to put some of this in the digital form. The other thing that saves you is you don't have to go through the file destruction process. So right now we keep these files, we give them to, I think we give them to you, don't we?
We store them.
And they store them. And then every once in a while they go through and shred them all. Well, if we can sort them digitally, we save that process. Um, we want to establish a comprehensive operations manual. That's Karina's ballpark. And I think if you print it out, I think it's as high as the table. But this court had no operating manual. So when we were taking on new people as well as when we were trying to operate it ourselves, we had really very little to look to as to how the court worked. So we want to, we want to fix that. We want to have an operations manual that we can refer to and that anybody else stepping in can refer to, uh, going forward. As I indicated, we want to, uh, explore ways of using the full court system more efficiently. Uh, we need to revise the schedule of court fees and cost. That was the last one that we'll see on the administrative orders two thousand seventeen. There's been several code changes. Um, I, uh, we're, we're basing off the two thousand three model traffic code. I don't know if that's going to change, but we need to take a look at those fines, that's fine schedule, and bring it up to date. The other thing that's happened is that the state last year made a massive change amendment to the state traffic code, uh, fines assessments. So we may be out of sync in regard to what they're doing. Uh, and finally, we're going to refer all the OJW cases to, uh, Bushwood Capital for collection. We, we did not do that in the past because we're relying upon the, uh, OJW system, the Department of Revenue's system, to collect those funds for us. And sometimes we would get payments from six years back or so. But that's gone. Uh, if you want your license back now, you pay ninety-five dollars, we give it back. So what we have, and we're just about done, I believe, on this, maybe we are done. We, and we're done?
Yes.
We're done, okay. See, accomplished, we're going to write that one off. But, uh, we feel it's appropriate to refer those big cases to collections since we no longer have the OJW system to collect those fines, fees and costs. Now, I will tell you, we got some going back to two thousand seven, which is, uh, Bushwood Capital went once and going back seven years, so some of those cases are going to go in the, not collected before. Um, any questions so far? Okay.
Looking at one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in thirteen, uh, Bushwood Capital. So, so I guess how current is that? Is that in the last two years, three years, or are we going back? This is all the way back in the last seven years?
No, uh, first of all, we don't have numbers going back seven years. That's something we're, or the two thousand seven, actually. That's something we're addressing now, uh, because we, we don't know, our files don't reflect who these cases were referred to. So we don't know the collection agency. The one forty-six is just from last year.
Just last year?
Yes.
And we're, and we're expecting only to get twenty percent?
That's what they tell me their collection rate is, yeah.
So I, I guess is that typical, uh, of a judicial system to put out that much in fees and fines and only get back twenty percent?
I can't tell you what others are doing, but I'm told that Bushwood Capital's doing a better job than the prior collection agency.
And those other fines, is any interest charged on this? Is it, is it?
Well, um, I, I don't know anything in the statutes that allows for interest. There, the statute does allow for the collection fees.
I guess I have one more question. Um, I mean, I guess as you look at it, the early really going, so out of one, that one forty-six that we refer to Bushwood Capital, that's everything for the year or is that?
Everything for the year, yeah.
Everything for the year.
Yeah. They probably have more than that in collection. But you can see, I, I, Bushwood Capital's new to this court, so I think the numbers in the past are, were quite low.
I mean, I guess my, my only question is, is there, you know, if we're putting out fines and fees that aren't going to be paid, is there a better way to go about handling this type of thing? Is there anything that, who good is their process of doing this or whatever? Because if we're not going to collect eighty percent, is it just a futile effort to go back around or something just going to be a little?
Well, as part of the legislation that, um, deleted the OJW process, the legislature established a commission to look at how to collect funds from municipal court. And I, they've issued a report, but to be honest with you, I would not, I don't think it's going to be productive.
Can you clarify for me, are we just going to need everything to them or only the stuff that isn't paid?
Only the stuff that isn't paid. So for example...
So a lot of people pay it.
Well, yeah, you can, and you can...
And then twenty percent is only reflective of the stuff that goes to collections.
That's correct. And if you look at the number on the amounts we've collected, it's a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So we're doing a better job than they are.
Yeah.
And the way we do that is, is if somebody was placed on probation, uh, and has a period of time to pay the fine, and we get down to the end of probation and it's not paid, then we refer it to collections.
So they have lots of opportunities to pay it before it's sent to them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It, it's, it's a, the last step for us. Now, the other thing I should add is the legislature's made it very hard to collect money. You can't, you can't incarcerate somebody if they don't have the bill to pay. And frankly, a lot of these people are probably thinking the economic stimulus is important. Which is why I mean, at least the folks that can't pay, I think pay. Which is why I'm so hot on this, so supportive of this, uh, penalty assessment, because those are the folks who seem to be able to get, you know, look, if you get a traffic ticket, you don't want to come to court, so it's easier to go online and pay the darn thing. So there's much more incentive to do that.
And the people who have followed them, if they get arrested for something, what do you want to do?
Well, interestingly enough, in full court, it accumulates all the amounts that are due. So if somebody has two or three other cases that they owe money on, that shows on the top line how much they owe.
It doesn't go away.
It does not go away.
Right, but we just have their teams as collectors.
Right.
And that's, and that's where I'm questioning, if we're looking at a forty, you know, even if we put up to one thirty-five, we put one forty-six out, which is probably, I mean, a forty percent collection on our side, we have twenty percent that we send to them, so this is about ten percent. So we're right around fifty to sixty percent on collecting unpaid funds. I mean, you know, is there, and I'm not, I'm not criticizing, I'm more questioning this, is there something we can use or anything? Have we seen any other municipalities do something different that might? Because what I would hate to see is us put out, you know, collect at a sixty percent rate and people just know, hey, we don't have to pay. We just literally don't have to pay.
Well, I think the clarification on that is that this is all past due collections. This isn't all, all the collections in the, uh, court. The court, the, the actual collection rate of actual general fines is probably retired. It's just the past due things are not getting twenty percent back. And those people probably wouldn't pay anyway.
Well, that's the forty percent, because he said we collected one thirty-five last year and he set one forty-six to collections.
Of the unpaid past due amounts.
Yeah, we, we, we collected one thirty-five. Bushwood Capital collected eighteen.
Right. It's a problem across Colorado.
That's what I figured, yeah.
Several years ago, the legislature tied their hands in municipal courts. I think that Brown talked to counsel about it a year, a few years ago. And a lot of that legislation is coming down, I would say, and all of that, it's been worse every year. It's an attack on municipal courts.
Well, it's not just municipal courts. It's, I mean, if you run a small business and everyone's paying, you're, you're lucky because there's a lot of small businesses that people just walk away from it does. But, not pushing.
We would see the same thing with, uh, implementation of the decriminalization of our products. But the impetus behind that, I spoke to one of the legislators that promoted that, and the impetus was behind that was to not penalize the indigent population or the financially challenged population playing those in funds and court costs. And that goes kind of the mindset behind, same mindset behind, uh, the legislation making it harder for us to collect money was that they felt we were unduly penalizing those indigent members of our population. Those people won't pay anyway. They don't have the money to pay. You could put them on a hot rack and stretch them and still wouldn't really pay that money.
What is it, like, in the country?
They, they just tied their hands in courts several years ago and, uh, just made it harder. Most people, like, tried to do their collection route, because you pay based on collections and you're not out, it's not risky for you to engage your collection. You can do something to make it work itself.
Well, I guess I love, I mean...
Do the best that we're scenario.
You know, like, for instance, if we're collecting at a, between Bushwood and us collecting a fifty to sixty percent fill, I mean, if we end up in a situation like that, why are, is there a way we can maybe instead of levying a fine or a penalty, set up a community service and try to work this off so that we at least are getting something out of it and we're seeing some kind of restitution in the heart of the economy?
That was proposed by the legislators that I don't think passed. Uh, and I will tell you, in the state court system, they have a collections investigator that has access to state records and so forth. And so they actively, at the moment, at that level, try to collect those funds. I mean, that, I mean, if, if you say what can you do, I can say, well, you can add that position, but is it going to be cost effective? I would say probably no. Um, and now if your collections go up, you know, one comment I will make is we can handle more cases than we're handling. I'm told that this case load's been much higher than this. Uh, and as you can see from the numbers, twenty twenty was pretty low. One thousand fifty-three, twenty twenty-one's thirteen fifty-eight. And if you go back to nineteen, it's fifteen fifty. And I feel like we can handle probably twice as many cases that we have now with the staff we have. But I, and I, I think that the fact of the matter is that most of the people, a lot of the people that come to court are financially indigent. Uh, I mean, some of these people are living, you know, under the bridge, as you know. They don't have any income and there's just no ready way to get the money from them.
And the legislature also looked at the fact of imposing, um, work release or community services and voluntary servitude. It's recent legislation, I think, that was...
Yeah, that's...
A further burn and foresting of, you know, the market.
And the other thing, if you do use a public service, there's a hundred dollar fine or a hundred dollar fee that we're associating with that. And that's another one of the fees that does need collecting.
Sorry, I just, just...
No, it's, it's a, it, it's a good point. And, uh, I mean, I think this affects the state court system too, because they have the same legislation to deal with as the municipal court.
I remember we talked about this when we pushed one of the proposals.
I can't do anything else to say.
Write that down.
As you're a lawyer, where, that's nothing to say, can you imagine that?
Imagine. I just want to throw out, Judge and I have been meeting on a regular basis and Judge's been just made permanent meetings and really, uh, with the staff, created a great team between the court and the rest of the city. Huge step forward. I appreciate that, man. Or, or...
It's part of that process of, it's all the spikes and the time to...
Yeah.
Tim's a purgerian. I thought we got the construction...
Yeah, that's what...
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the chance to visit with you and the support that you folks have given to the court.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get back out there and get that money.
Here we go.
Mike's dying tonight, sir. Mr. Sherry. He's kind of like a side friend.
I guess so. All right, I think first up is the, uh, golf course, dragon range netting project. Um, so we're, uh, recommending authorization of eighty-seven thousand eight hundred ninety dollars to install a, uh, dragon range netting along the west side of the existing dragon range. Um, so in the back, there's a diagram that shows the existing netting on the east and south side, and then this additional net would go along the west side and kind of complete the, uh, three sides of the dragon range. Um, we put this out for bid, we, um, formatted it in a way to where wood posts were the primary bid and that, uh, steel posts were to be proposed as an alternate. Um, steel posts are what are there now, um, but because of, uh, quotes received and pricing, uh, we wanted to use wood posts. Um, it was something that we, um, the golf course looked at last year when we budgeted for this project and, um, wood posts would be a, um, good alternative and a cheaper and probably more readily available product. Um, we only received one of the responses that, that replied with the, um, the intended wood posts. The other two that were received were for the steel alternate only and, um, technically weren't even a complete bid. Um, but pricing did come in as expected. Uh, the wood posts were the cheaper, um, of the options. Um, and it also was from West Coast Netting, which is who installed the netting that's up there now. So in twenty seventeen, that was installed by West Coast Netting. Um, so the, the specs for the netting itself and the attachments are the same as twenty seventeen, the only difference is the post itself.
Joe, on, uh, on the post, we're, we're looking at life cycle difference on this.
Um, probably very similar, actually, because, so the wood post is a treated post. It's a lot like what you see in utility pole. Um, it's treated with the same, um, same thing, same way as our utility poles. Um, steel is embedded in concrete where these wood posts are just in compacted, um, fill. So lifespan will be similar.
So, so there really isn't an argument to go with, uh, steel from a Montrose company for only fifteen thousand one? I mean, really should be doing, we should be...
I don't believe so. I think the only, the only benefit I see is that... I don't believe so, I think the only, the only benefit I see is that it would look the same. You know, if you had a close eye, you could see that the steel posts along one side are steel, and the other side will be wood.
But some of these people didn't actually complete their bid.
Yeah, the video was formatted to be a wood, wood post was bid in an alternate by steel. I mean, I think we probably could, I don't think that the golf, from the golf course, they were intending on having wood posts. So that's why we selected that option.
And then the life expectancy of the netting, what is that?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head, but, you know, more than ten years, I would say, so the.
We've got another five, six years almost coming up.
Yeah, and then that would just be a netting replacement at that time, or maybe even just only attachments, depending on condition of the netting.
And in good shape now?
Yeah, yep, the what's up now is in good shape.
I'd like to make this decision based on it really being a safety need, to emphasize that in this information.
Yeah.
I do say that.
Yep, I mentioned it.
On a net, I just would like to say, like, you know, we really need it to be.
Yes, I mentioned it.
It's a liability concern.
And I may not be able to speak to that as well, I don't know if Tom or Andy could.
Yeah, so, right now, at the driving range, you hope that people are driving balls straight. But that doesn't always happen, and so when balls gear off over to the right, they can potentially hit golfers on that ball. And people will know to be heads up, because they're golfing in general, but unfortunately, you know, balls do stray that way. And then also, so that's one safety issue. Also then, our staff needs to go and pick up the range balls. They have a great key to operate the equipment, but they need to gear over in order to pick up those range balls, which gets in the way of play as well. And then when, fortunately, when we're cutting the grass, they can drive over and you look for those balls, get out and try to come up, but sometimes you'll see the balls, and then that ruins the balls and they drive over when they're cutting the grass, and so that's a waste of money too. And so this has been planned, as I understand it, for years. And so we've been talking with councils for years to try and budget for this expense. And this is the year we proposed the budget for twenty twenty-two to do it. Primarily for safety, it's not aesthetics. It is not even really to make golfing better, it really is operations of the golfers that they do.
Yeah, two big things, it's hundreds of balls a day, it's not just a few stray balls, it's hundreds. And you didn't mention golfers who are golfing on hole four, and they slice into the driving range. They go into the driving range and get their balls, and now people are hitting them. And it's very dangerous, so this would have the net working the opposite direction as well. So as you spray your ball in the plane, the whole, you'll hit the net and drop. So you're in no reason for any trouble to be going out of the green. A ball's gone, they're getting much.
Which is greatly greater than very, very good in these golf courses.
Yeah, because it bounces right out of them. Holding strategy.
What's a, what's a course called when it's all real tight like that, the way like a city course is?
It's a park court, park style is our front and back is on.
Right, so park style, and so the driving range is always just going to be in the middle. And so this is, just mitigates the, helps with the safety issue on park style courses.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want us to.
We only have half of the, what most every other place has, to be able to save them both sides, so we're halfway there. The question that Bud's proposed to me, I was talking about Jim, in fact, this to Jim earlier, is that the question was, why don't we move the driving range to the north side of the parking lot that they were there? Prior answer was, we could do it on the land. Well, now we do. Is that in the long term plan, could possibly move the driving range off of the current course being expanded from our fives in front? By having the driving range on the north side of the parking lot, and then all those separate spaces. And we still leave netting on both sides, because it protects the houses on either side. Is that perhaps a long-term solution? So long term, we've talked about a lot of different ideas with that property that we purchased there. At the golf advisory committee level, they've looked at capital plans very, since the very beginning we acquired the course. And what seems to have resonated with most people is that the new property would become a location for the maintenance sheds. The buildings are all falling apart, so eventually, they're going to need to be relocated to that property, which has kind of a hillside to it, where you could build sheds right up to the hillside to help with the aesthetics of the environment and accessibility, those types of things. And then that would allow the current driving range, we actually have two halves to the driving range. We have kind of an iron facility and then driver side. Both are limited range, so you can't hit a driver if you're a really good golfer on our driving range, because you cleared the net, you're all over. And so even, they can do three wheel, even targets of a non-driveer, unless you use limited flight balls. And so we're just, we're landlocked, basically. So the most common idea is to extend the current driving range toward the parking lot and drive, and eventually, maybe even access off of Miami Road along where we did that tentative paving and plant of the tree road. That would be the main access, that would eliminate the entrance here, where you could push the driving range back and have a whole length driving range, and then it would extend the whole forward and make it longer. And the problem, all of the half terms ideas have a re-inversion. But the new property wouldn't necessarily be big enough for a full driving range. Another idea, Matt, and at the very beginning, was we could do a par three style small course on that new facility and a short range course. But after talking with players there, members, the golf pros, the high school teams and their coaches, our Black Canyon Golf Course is kind of the best of all, which when it comes to training for the youth and for really newcomers to the game of golf, because it's not too difficult where you get frustrated and quit, but it's got everything you need. So it has narrow fairways, very small greens, tree line, so it teaches you all the stuff you need. Where in other places where you don't have that, that's where they built the short range facility. They don't really need to do that, because we already service that. So the best, highest new facility in the country seems to be the new location of the maintenance sheds and those types of things, which is what's slated.
And for you, you can talk about the restaurant, if you want, transition like that.
Yeah, and so the restaurant has its own meanings, you can't, and you also can't pull up and drop stuff off. So if you're elderly or handicapped or those types of things, or you just have a big family or tons of golf clubs, you currently can't pull up, drop your clubs off, and then drive back to the parking lot, where you can't also be able to golf first. And you can't drive up in the park nets to the restaurant either, so. For non-golfers, using a restaurant, that's not going to be, so there's been some talk about the restaurant. So laundry plans would be possible, you can demolish your current, the main sheds once we build the new ones, and relocate and build a new clubhouse and restaurant closer to the parking lot. So you can make a golf on restaurant and, of course, more accessible. And these are long-term projects, so anybody watching, these are not in works in the next several years. We're talking long-term right now.
But to your point, none of that really affects our decision to go forward with making the driving use of the.
No, because our investment to the driving range, we'd be there for quite a long time, it wouldn't be obsolete.
How many balls do we use per day or just by making the driving?
Individually?
Shredding, shredding.
Either shredding, or they just get picked up, or people pick them up and?
Could be anywhere, we can find out.
Well, I'm just curious.
Quite a few though, because we see the big piles that have.
Yeah, and then we have to get rid of those balls, or we just don't find them, because people pick them up and play with them. I just could wait. Thousand, and we end up with seven hundred and fifty a day, that's two hundred and fifty balls a day loss, that's a lot.
Oh, I figured something out on how many we buy every year, that part of this stuff.
It's going to be interesting, because that also could be something that we're working to show you what they mean as we're saving this much money per year for the next ten years, since it's good for ten years, which means it'll pay for itself by the time.
Just for a plug, we're always looking at sponsors for our driving balls as well, and we can put their logo right on and pay for the balls, and we'll advertise it as an support.
This is still not going to protect runners on Hillcrest.
No, no, won't protect the houses that I did on a regular basis across the road.
So if we reverse the direction, maybe you wouldn't be hitting out into the street, right?
I would be, because I slice.
I'm saying if we reversed the direction three or four, and you went from north to south, you'd be safe.
No.
No, you can hit both.
I hit both her. We're versatile, we're multi-talented golfers, we can slice and.
That's sometimes.
Depends on the day. So we did talk a lot about the wooden poles versus the metal. And I just ran the numbers, so talking about the local preference, it's sixteen percent approximate difference in our local preference as much as we.
It was enough to make a local preference.
Yeah, if it was a lot closer to our local preference, we'd probably be discussing.
Anything else? All right, Jim?
I just wanted to say thank you to Jim for his, for this project, to be able to, to be collaborating, and to be a sponsor. And so Jim, I really appreciate him, and all the people that are helping us and give bids, and so it's great.
Yeah. Cracksill. On the cracksill material purchase. So we are kickstarting our cracksill plan for the year. So this is to be used by in-house city crews for our crack seal plan, which I attached to this as a, to remind you, it's our eight-year plan, so we're trying to, we're shooting for an eighth of the city to be crack sealed, and also doing some crack sealing ahead of the contracted move mode project for this year. But between the two, our crew is going to be very busy, so we like to get after it as early as we can. We have pricing secured, and that's one thing we're always shooting for, is to make sure we can hold our pricing, which we're able to through this vendor, Denver Industrial, which we've used over the last several years. And to keep the material the same as what we want, we found one material that we really like, it works well with our equipment, it works well with the temperature ranges that we apply it in, and also use it throughout the summer. There's always kind of a trade-off to where you can get something that's, you know, really, really good in the wintertime, but not good in the summertime, and we found a material that works, I can think, on all levels for us. And that's why we're recommending that award through a sole source waiver, because it's the material we would prefer to use. And pricing is comparable to what we've paid in the past and also to other materials. We check prices, obviously, just to make sure that our prices aren't changing more than, more than normal. We did see a small increase, a few percent, but not, not an alarming amount. And also, again, comparable to other cracks and materials. So we're recommending that fifty-five thousand five hundred sixty-one purchased to Denver Industrial and the approval of a sole source waiver for that material type. And this is included in our streets asphalt budget. It's combined with asphalt purchase for the year, so when we do our patching, we will also use the same budget, but approximately sixty thousand of that was set aside for crack seal material, so we are under what we budgeted for this material.
Jim, for clarification, we're talking about our cracking information team, the actual, and this is available on our movement dot com page, or in your crack seal plan. So people can go on there and they can see where planned crack seal projects are.
Exactly, yeah, so you can go to and see what year, obviously, for twenty twenty-two, will be in the dark green area, and that's where we will focus and get all of those streets cracked sealed, that we can crack seal. And then we would be working outside of that area in some cases, mostly to be ahead of the surface treatments as part of our movement project, so we may be outside of the area for that reason. And in other cases, if there's something that, that needs attention right away, we would crack seal. But primarily, we're going to focus in that green area for this year. Yep.
And I think the other day, Jim, you pointed out that the crack seal is a great job of, you know, it's deterioration for sound.
Yeah, it's, it's one of the most cost-effective ways to extend the life of the road, and mainly in keeping moisture out from under the asphalt, so kind of waterproofing it or sealing it, right? Crack sealing it, to extend the life of the road.
So final question, I think it's kind of off the topic, I think. I've seen a lot of, especially in older cities, making highways to reduce heat in the area by, especially the light or color, using that white on the ground, which is that, is that something we ever looked at to see if we could reduce heat? Generation of asphalt, is that even important?
No, it's not something I've looked into, I'm not aware of that material available in this area, but I'd have to look into it, be sure.
I'm just curious, are we planning or maybe certain areas in the center of us to consider? I know we get hot sometimes, especially during the summer.
You know, again, I'm not sure, I have not seen it in this area, but would be happy to look into it.
I read an interesting article about the primary focus of that is the tents or the areas, even there isn't any kind of vegetation or trees.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if even that made a difference for us.
I don't know, but so here, we're worried about the problem, we have to find out more.
Generally, our suppliers don't, it's not available, it's more focused on hair in the centers, they do, that is a thing. But we're low enough average temperature that we see enough advantage of the darker, like the stuff that we slurry this year, it's darker and fresh in the winter for snow. Yep, yep, so there is, there is a distinct advantage there, so we can go to the heat reduction centers. Generally, do our best.
It's nice faster.
That makes sense.
Well, you've got to absorb the heat, so if you like snow, it's also a good thing.
Yeah, and then it holds the heat longer, so that it do not make it easy for us to stop. Anytime.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions on the crack seal?
All right.
Let's go on to parks one contract.
One more. So this is for our contracted turf care in our parks. So we contract out the mowing and irrigation checks for most of our parks. We do handle in-house, we keep like the cemetery, Sunset Mesa, some of those more sensitive areas we maintain with our own crews, as well as a handful of smaller parks, but some of these larger parks, we contract out that turf care. And so we, again, we issued an RFP for this, this service as well, and received one bid from the contractor we've used over the last several years for the service. And they, and they do a great job, of course, they really are really good to work with. But they were the only bid we received. Pricing was about five percent higher than what we've been, what we paid last year, which was somewhat expected, we've seen prices on everything go up, so a five percent increase was not an alarming amount. And we did actually anticipate for that in, in what we budgeted, we knew there would be prices increasing. So without, this is a pretty straightforward, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or maybe, you know, we'd be recommending award to Green and Barrett. And this is a, the bill is, as work is performed, and in not to exceed amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand four hundred dollars, which is what we budgeted.
That's an election about where you can see the business, the purpose, and the prices that we heard about. Any other questions? About general city council discussion. I don't have anything either. We stay in the comments. Nothing?
I, I would just like to, um, give a brief comment, um, as to, um, the municipal court report. There's been a lot of change this year, um, this past year with the court. It's been handled, uh, by Judge Greenacre with a great measure of grace, um, and a lot of professionalism. Uh, it's a credit to him and his staff. Um, I appreciate litigating in front of him and look forward to, um, um, working with him in the future.
If there's nothing else, we will close the work session for today. Thank you.